And bleak world in which we're living. And you know, I just stood there. I was a very new Brahman. I was only 22 years old. I just stood there and I looked at it and I thought, that's us. And even that's me. And really, I think we're at a time in the confluence age where Baba wants us all to step up into our angelic stage. And sometimes I think this is the most special time of the whole cycle. This is the time of magic. And in my mind, the most magical time of the whole cycle is still to come. The most extraordinary time of this whole cycle is still to happen. Because all of us, we are going to watch the revelation of God in this world. We are going to watch the poor wandering human souls in some form find their father. And we're going to observe the period of God's angels being revealed in this world. And you know, sometimes I think on the one hand, we live in a world with increasing exponential stress, anxiety, depression. There's many reasons for that, but the deeper reason is that the whole part is in the human soul. The past, the present, and the future. As we all sit here this morning watching this, our future is recorded in our memory track. And all the human souls are tuning in. They're becoming aware unconsciously that the future is one of absolute chaos. The future is really something which is going to, all the institutions that they've invested their faith in are going to collapse. And this is the real reason why there's so much upheaval in our world. But what's in the memory track of we Brahmins? Our future part is sitting there too. Our part to step onto the world stage and play our part as angels. That is sitting there. And sometimes I think Baba is invoking it. The world is invoking it. The Brahmins is a part of last cycle. And even in this morning's moli, you know, that we heard the avyakta moli, that through my face, through my And Baba spoke the moli. And at the end of the moli, I was called up with two others. There was three double foreigners. And Baba gave long drishti. And really, I had the experience because Baba would always meet with long drishti. And I had the experience, it was like Baba's drishti was like a laser beam that went so deep into the soul and scanned the soul. You know, and it was almost like Baba's drishti fell on the original me, the pure me, the elevated me, the deity sanskaras, if you can say, and massaged that to the surface. And in a sense, introduced me to who I really was. I can honestly say my, something changed in me that night. It was like Baba gave me the gift of self-respect. But what I realized was that Baba was seeing me so elevated. Baba's vision was seeing me as, you know, such an elevated soul and my own vision on myself was so limited. Baba was seeing me as an angel, but I was still in a sense, still seeing myself in such a limited way. I think that so much of this Brahman life is to step out of the limited vision on the self and step into God's vision. And sometimes I think, you know, Baba says, child, you are an angel. Child, you are an ancestor soul. Child, you are a a world benefactor. And we say, no, Baba, no, I'm not. You don't know what I'm like. Because it's actually Baba who knows me. We are so stuck in the prison of limited vision on myself. And I honestly feel that sometimes that if, you know, I'm Baba's child and I'm stuck in this limited vision, stuck in a lack of self-respect, have I really recognized who's teaching me? Because Baba is in his angelic form and Baba is now teaching us to step into that angelic form too. And you know, in my Brahman journey, I feel that what I love to do is observe myself, observe my inner world, what I'm learning. And I've observed I'm living Each one of us carries a story. What has happened to me? How people have treated me? What people have done to me? What people have said to me? And often when the mind is lost in memories, lost in these feelings, the result? I'm still very much vyakta. Once again, I love Baba. I have faith in Baba. I follow the principles. But my mind is still very much lost in the corporeal world. So the first, my mind lost in the external world of senses. The second, my mind lost in the internal world of the past and memories. The third, my mind lost in human relationships. I would say this is the biggest one. Baba uses that word paachintan, where the mind is constantly absorbed in people, what they're thinking, how they feel about me, their opinions, their ideas. It may not even be negative. But for two and a half thousand years, I've had this sanskara of observing and feeling affected by people around me. When my subtle yoga, even as we're listening to this webinar, my mind is thinking of children, family members, I'm very much vyakta. The fourth state of mind, which I've observed my mind can live in is what I would call Baba's world. Where I'm the main influence is Baba. And you know, once Daddy Gozar gave a beautiful class and she said, to live within the Mariadas of the mind. In other words, to remain vyakta. I have to take responsibility to live within the parameters of Baba's truth, Baba's knowledge, of chit chat with Baba, of remembering Baba, of having good wishes and pure feelings for everyone. This morning's moli is so powerful. Baba is just saying it's absolutely essential to have loving feelings for everyone at every moment. That's the only way I can remain vyakta. I'm sorry about that. I think I lost you just for a second. So I do apologize. This is a part of living in the vyakta world that sometimes we lose each other. So this has actually been my own personal focus, actually during the whole COVID period, I would say, was to really ask my heart, you know, how much do I really remain in Baba's world? How much do I remember Baba? How much do I remain vyakta? I can remember in the days when, in the 1970s, when we would meet Baba, Baba would say, children, if you make effort to remain in the vyakta stage during the day, Baba will give you special experiences. And really, when we were in Madhavan, we had that experience that when we really in my life, then when I have these the unique spiritual experiences. And I was really, you know, my effort over a period of time. I might just continue if that's okay. I'm not sure what I missed out there, but um, you know, my effort over a period of time is really, I've been asking my heart, why did I come to Baba? I came to Baba to transform myself and become pure. Why am I still with Baba? It's the answer is the same, to transform myself and become pure. And what is the method? Every day, the one who's eternally pure, the soul who's never influenced, the soul who always retains truth. And the number one human soul tell us every day, remembrance, remembrance, remembrance. And I decided that we hear this all the time, but if I ask my heart honestly, how much do I remember Baba really? And what is the quality of my remembrance? If God comes at the end of the cycle and his fundamental instruction to us is to remember him, how much am I really doing that? And you know, it's almost like we absorb the ocean of knowledge for one thing, to keep the subtle thread of my intellect with one. And when I do, automatically I'm vyakta. I'm in that vyakta state. And I'm always fascinated that Baba never uses the word meditation. Baba, we use that word, but Baba uses the word remembrance. Why? Because remembrance is absolutely natural. And what I love is that true Brahman life is natural. I feel these days And when I naturally, the most natural thing for the human soul is to fall in love. When I naturally fall in love, I naturally remember. And when I naturally remember, when Baba's
Om Shanti. So seems Charlie Bay is having some network issues. So until he joins back, let's reflect on you know, what is stopping us from being a Vekh. Charlie Bay already shared us a few points, how we look at the self, others. So let's reflect until he comes. We'll be in silence for that.
Can you hear me once again? I'm so sorry about this. I don't know what's happening, but the internet off and on and off and on. I do apologize, but I think we're back on once again.
Yes, brother, please go ahead.
I'm sorry, everybody.
That's right.
It's a bit like our connection with Baba. Sometimes it's all, sometimes it's all and someone has written, drama is fun. Yes, I agree. So it's just really sharing and I'll have to collect my thoughts that, you know, this, when I remember, three things are happening. Firstly, you know, I connect. Secondly, I'm influenced. And thirdly, I have an experience inside. This is all absolutely instantaneous. And to me, depending on the subtle thread of my intellect where I connect, that's whether I'm vyakta or vyakta. If the subtle thread of my intellect connects to family and friends, there's a little bit of conflict or difference. I'm instantly influenced by that. And I have an experience of peacelessness. And you know, the subtle thread, it's like you plug into a personality. The instant you plug in, if the relationship is not so good, instantly I feel a bit peaceless inside. Even if I plug into a family that I'm really close to, I have a really loving relationship. I'm influenced by that. I may feel warm, but I'm still in the vyakta state. And this is where really, the whole of this life is to live in this corporeal world. Fulfill my responsibilities to people and relationships, but constantly be on the pilgrimage to keep my intellect with Shiv Baba. Because automatically it's like Baba's the influence. And it's like the vibrations in my mind are very angelic, are very light, are very pure, and are very clean. And you know, sometimes if I'm very open with you, I sit at Amrit Bhav in the morning. And I start with the purest thought. The purest thought, I'm going to sit with God. This is the only time in the cycle. The early morning hours are the sacred time for me to be with Baba. And in a millisecond, my mind has traveled somewhere. You know, I may be thinking about a person or a situation, may not be negative, it may not be bad, but I've traveled to another destination. I want my heart says to travel to Shiv Baba. But in a millisecond, and it's absolutely instant, I travel and connect with something else. Why? Because the myth that we have been fed for half a cycle is that peace, love, and happiness is out there. And that's when we sit to remember Baba, then the intellect jumps and it goes outside to a person, to a situation, to a desire. This is really, I would say, the incredible attention of Brahman life to really pay attention to where I plug my intellect into because mostly I plug it into things of the corporeal world. My stage remains ordinary. But when I keep plugging it into Baba, Baba's virtues, Baba's qualities, my stage becomes angelic and vyakta. To me, there's three laws of remembrance. The first law says, pay attention to what I remember. Pay attention to where this subtle thread travels to. It's instant, it's beyond time and space. It can go an infinite distance in, or it can go way back into the past or into the future. The second law says, whatever I connect to will influence me. I come under the shadow. If I remember a human being, it's like I subtly come under the shadow of that soul, their karmas, whatever. And whatever influences me, the third law says, that is the feeling I download into my mind. And I would say that if I don't feel so happy, if I don't feel that good, if my stage is a bit low, there's only one question to ask my heart. And that is, what have I been remembering? What have I plugged the subtle thread of my intellect into? What am I connecting myself to? Because really, to live in the vyakta stage while fulfilling responsibilities, while doing work, while being responsible for my family, there's only one thing I really have to do, pay attention to what I remember. Which means really pay attention to what I connect to. And this is why the ultimate direction from the one who's eternally the truth is to remember me alone. And when I do, it's almost like I'm automatically in that angelic stage. And if you think my experience is when I remember Baba, it's almost like I click on the Baba website. You know, and I download Baba's vibrations, Baba's qualities, Baba's energy into the sacred space of my mind. And that vibration, that vibration that I hold in my mind is, is the attainment of the confluence age. That vibration of love, of belonging, of peace, of purity, that vibration sustains me. It sustains the atmosphere around me and it sustains people close to me. This is the service of an angel. An angel has put one Baba in their heart. To me, the most powerful point of spiritual knowledge is to have all relationships with Baba. When the subtle thread is genuinely under the influence of one, then I will be in that vyakta state. I will download Baba's vibrations and energy into my mind. And then wherever I go, I am transmitting that elevated vibration. And so that question, if you don't feel so good, not feeling so happy, not feeling fulfilled, the only question to ask yourself is, what am I connecting my mind to? What am I remembering? And you will observe you've been dwelling on a person, dwelling on a situation, dwelling on someone's behavior, dwelling on a worry about yourself. And this is really what I'm paying attention to myself. Not to spend time in those directions, but to really pay attention to where the subtle thread of my intellect goes. The more I go on in my Brahman life, I admire Brahma Baba so much because it seems to me at every millisecond, he paid attention to where the subtle thread of his intellect was going to. And I remember once observing up at a meeting, Daddy Nirmala Shanta. All of you know Daddy Nirmala Shanta, who was his loka and aloka daughter. It was a beautiful meeting. And Baba gave her drishti. And Baba said, you're busy, aren't you? And she nodded, yes, Baba, I'm busy. Baba gave her more drishti. And then Baba said, you're very busy, aren't you? She said, yes, Baba, I'm very busy. And then Baba said something which really had a big influence on my Brahman life. Baba said, many drops make an ocean. The drops of remembrance make an ocean of remembrance. The drops of remembrance keep me in the vyakta state. And then Baba gave her practical advice. Baba said, when you finish a meeting and walk down the hall, remember Baba. When you go for a glass of water, remember Baba. You know, and I began to observe my life and observe what happens when you talk to somebody. Every day we're interacting with people. When you walk away from that conversation, what happens in? Where does your subtle thread of your intellect go? Do you start to analyze that conversation? Do you start to analyze that conversation? Process what that person said, or do I go to Baba? And you know, what I realized is that we have so much mental time. We all say, "Oh, I'm so busy." We're not busy, actually. We have so much mental time. But we spend so much of my mental time processing, analyzing the self-life situations. The result, I'm in the viat world. I'm a Brahman, but I'm stuck in the corporeal. Because I don't keep making that habit to go to Baba. But when, in all those moments, like even when you finish this webinar, where does your mind go? If you go together, have a cup of tea, or take a bath, or whatever you do? Does my mind just wander anywhere? Or do I really remember Baba? Because when we use all those drops, it becomes an ocean. And when those drops of remembrance become an ocean, it's almost like I'm living in that avyat state. The main influence on me is Shiv Baba. And to me, what does it mean to follow Sri Maitri? To put myself under the influence of one. Our sanskara for half the cycle is to put myself under the influence of gurus and teachers and families and society and cultures and all this. But in this life, what I've seen, the Brahmins who really reach a stage, put themselves under the influence of one. And when Baba's the influence, it's like I'm in that avyat state. And so what I began to do was rather than wake up in the morning and think, oh, you know, let me remember Baba. And you know how sometimes two hours can go by, you're busy, you're doing your job. And you think, gosh, I've hardly remembered Baba in two hours. Well, you get to the end of the day and look back and you think, Baba, you know, I read the mooli, I do love you, but I haven't remembered you really accurately, I would say. And then we sort of, inside, sometimes there's a little bit of hopelessness that I am a Brahman, but I'm not really a yogi Brahman. I'm not really living in that angelic state. So what I decided to do was just set myself little chunks of time so that when the mooli finished, if I go to have breakfast, challenge myself, how long do I remember Baba during breakfast? After breakfast, if I'm got to do a few duties for 15 minutes, how long do I remember Baba? On my way to work, how long do I remember Baba? So sometimes five minutes, sometimes 20 minutes, sometimes half an hour. And when you do these little chunks, you start to build the habit of remembrance. Which means that really, it's like you're more influenced by Baba, Baba's vibrations, Baba's truth, Baba's Sri Maitri, than you are influenced by the locket world. Because you know, sometimes I have the image that there's eight billion human souls in this world, eight billion. They're all pumping out thoughts. Science tells us that each one of us pumps out around 70,000 unique thought patterns in a waking day. It's like we're living in a thought soup. We're living in a thought soup. And unless I make a conscious effort to remember Baba, I absorb that thought soup. The thought soup of the world is so ordinary, so mundane, so corporeal, so viat, so full of anxiety, so full of worries, so full of depression. Sometimes we wonder why my stage isn't good. Because I'm absorbing the vibrations of the world. I'm not under the influence of this one. And this is why for me, at the moment, I would say paying attention to where my intellect travels to. The subtle thread of the intellect. What do I plug my intellect into is the most important thing. And in a moment, I'll have time for some questions, but when I was early in Gyan, just one last thing to share. I was in London, I was very new. And twice, I had the experience, I think of trance. And it was the sensation that I traveled an infinite distance. And I came in front of the face of Babadatta. The angelic face of Babadatta. You can't imagine how beautiful that face is. It was glowing with love and purity, just radiating. It was like iridescent. The purity and love of Babadatta's face. The face of an angel. And that face had such an influence on me. And I think really, when we pay attention to where my subtle thread of my intellect travels to, what I connect with, the more I pay attention, the more I become an angel, my face, my drishti, my vibrations, my presence will create an atmosphere that will really give Baba's message. This is really what I think Baba wants from us at the moment. To be beyond the influence of this corporeal world really needs quite a lot of attention. But to me, the attention doesn't create tension, it's just this gentle observation of where the subtle thread travels to. And if I travel to a person, dwell on someone's behavior, dwell on a situation, quickly bring it back. The more you pay attention, you will be surprised how quickly you know, your stage will grow and you will really feel you're living in this avyat, this viat world, but you're detached and loving. You're beyond the influence of it. And you're really experiencing this avyat stage. Anyway, I should wind up there. If anyone has any questions, and once again, I do apologize for, I've got no idea, it's never happened to me before. But it is a good metaphor for life, isn't it? Sometimes the connection is there and then it goes so quickly. But if anyone has any questions, I'd really love to have some chit chat for a few minutes.
Yeah, so I believe I'm audible. If anybody has any questions, I can either raise your hands or put them down in the chat window so that brother can address us. Somebody raised hand, just missed that. Yeah. Kalpechji, please go ahead.
Thank you very much, Charlie Brother. And I'm really excited from yesterday, I'm very much excited to hear you that I hear that you are the first three child from Janki Dadi's. I have very much of in this year from last two and a half years. I want to know, it's my, really my experience and that it's day by day elevated thought, the increase in happiness is increasing. So that's really means what I said, this is a very, I want to correlate with you, how can this, it is a in the world of negativity, your battery will be going up. So this really, I want to hear from you, how is your experience?
So Kalpech, are you saying, you know, how not to be influenced by negativity? Is that what you're asking?
Yes, yes.
You know, firstly, I would say that it will come because we all have very deep sanskaras of body consciousness. You know, when I started, you were talking about Daddy Janki. I started with a brother and once Daddy asked us after six months in Gyan, she said, "What are you experiencing?" And this brother said to Daddy, Daddy, I realize how body conscious I am. And Daddy said, "Right, right." Because sometimes we realize we are deeply body conscious. The five vices will come to every soul. Quite frankly, anger, ego, greed, lust, attachment. There is not one human soul that doesn't have them. But the real damage is my reaction to my vices. Shame, guilt, fear, lack of self-respect. A Gyan soul will realize that negativity will come. And rather than become emotional and feel bad and then punish myself feeling, how can I be a Brahman with impure thoughts? The Gyan soul will try to apply knowledge, not react emotionally, but react with knowledge and understand. Because Baba says, children's storms will come. Baba himself says, he never says children's storms might come. They will come, even Brahma Baba says storms come to him. The thing is, I would say Kalpech, by your, in your first few years, never ever give up, no matter how much the negativity or the sense that sometimes comes that I, can I become pure? Can I really become pure in this life? Never ever give up. Just hold that hand of Baba, put yourself under the influence of one. And you will find my experiences, my Brahman life hasn't been like a smooth thing like that. It's more like this is the reality, to be honest.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
I think
Yeah. Charlie, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, so we have one question on the chat window from Pail Ben that Om Shanti Brother, I do practice moments and chunks of remembrance, but always practical about how to put that down in the chart. Maybe I might overestimate my thoughts. So your opinion on how to put the remembrance in the chart?
You know, I don't think personally, it's about oh, five minutes an hour, three minutes of an hour. It's more about the quality. You know, did I really, am I really in a state of being enclosed to Baba, belonging to Baba? Am I really under the canopy of Baba, or am I under the canopy of the world, others, the atmosphere, etc.? So I used to do just, when I did my chart, I used to do excellent, good, fair, not so good like that, rather than within minutes. And you know, to be very honest with you, when I started, a chart was actually a part of the Mariadas. Just like you're a vegetarian, you would do a chart. But Daddy Janki said in the 1980s, only do a chart if you really feel benefit. Because some people felt every day they were writing, said what vices came, anger, ego, greed. And if we keep reinforcing that, sometimes we feel I'm not getting anywhere. The whole idea of a chart is what I was sharing about, paying attention to where your mind goes, what is happening in your mind. The idea of the chart is to create a sanskara of attention to myself.
Well, thanks, brother. That was really insightful. We have another question on the chat. It's based on understanding Avik Mooli. So the question says, Charlie, why? While it is easy to understand the Sakar Moolis, Sakarvanes, but a bit difficult for new Brahmins to understand Avik Moolis? Please let us know the proper and simple method to understand each line of it. Your suggestions and guidelines to understand Avik Mooli?
You know, I would say to understand any mooli, when I started, I was taught the teacher is self-conscious. And to listen, I should be on the same wavelength. Now, if we're all honest, everyone listening to this, I'm sure we've listened to some moolis that are like magic. Each points like an arrow that hits. Another times it sounds ordinary. It's not the mooli that's ordinary, it's me. Because if I'm a bit tired, my stage is a bit weak, I'm a bit body conscious, it sounds ordinary. To me, the whole thing about listening to a mooli is to prepare my, my stage. The more I'm self-conscious, then I will absorb it on the level that Baba is speaking. And that's the way to sort of not so much listen with the intellect only, but listen with the heart as well. And then to me, when I'm self-conscious, the mooli is magic. It hits home deeply.
Very true. Brother, we have one question. Charlie, how do I know that I'm cheating or dishonest with myself or Baba?
You won't be happy. And to be very frank, we are experts at self-deception. We are experts at self-deception. The bhakti sanskara is blind spots. I cannot see myself clearly. This is one of the things because if I see my impurity, if I see my negativity, I feel bad. And so subconsciously, I've shut down looking at my weakness. And this is why when some people say to me, you're like this, and we get so offended and so hurt. Because we're blind to my weakness. I think, you know, wherever I'm feeling really uncomfortable, wherever I feel sometimes very uneasy, underneath that is often a blind spot, I can't look at myself. And I would say one of the main things of a Gyan soul is to be able to have that realistic vision of the self. And that means not just to know my weakness, but to know my beauty. The biggest blind spot for most Brahmins is we can't see what Baba sees in me. We can't see how elevated my original state is. And because I can't see that too, I just don't want to look at my weaknesses. So I live in denial or avoidance of seeing really who I am clearly objectively. And the Gyan soul will see their weakness and not react to their weakness. They won't feel bad about their weakness.
Thank you, brother. So we have many questions, but I think in interest of time, we might have to redo. So let me, brother, ask you one last question before we move on to a short meditation session. And I believe most of the other's questions might get solved in this. So there are two questions which I'll ask. Charlie, Charlie Brother, why is it? While it is very easy to do meditation at Amritavale and Numasham, it's challenging to do at traffic controls or during the day? So how can I make my meditation or concentration power increased for the time during the day as well?
Thank you, Prof. Bai. I think the main reason is that for half a cycle, we have got our self-respect from doing actions and receiving the fruit. So I do something for someone and they give me love or they give me respect. But when you start doing action, your mind is so attached to the outcome or the result of action that when you stop for traffic control, the mind is sort of really engaged with the result of the action. I would say one of our main attachments is to the fruit of an action.
Yes. So thank you, brother. So would you like to guide us through a short meditation?
Taking fruit of my actions, I take the fruit from Baba and I come into action detached and loving way. And that's why when And that's why when I stop the traffic control, my mind keeps running to the fruits of actions, to the results of actions, to what's happening around me. And it's just attention. You know, Brahman life is just practice, but you know, I've seen the ones who really grow just keep practicing, never stop. Every day they do a little bit and you keep on growing.
Yeah, thank you, brother. So maybe we can do some small meditation. Of course, there are a few announcements, so I'll request everybody to please be online for some time. There were many questions regarding the Avik Murli Club, so I'll announce that a little later. But before that, let's spend some time.
So once again, thank you so much, Prabhupada. It's lovely to see you. Thank you to everyone online. Apologies for whatever was happening with our internet. But let us now sit with Baba. Let me reflect deeply and observe the subtle. If I remember the past if I remember the past and the internal world. If my mind is constantly trying to understand others and their behavior. I live in the corporeal world. I have love for Baba, I have faith in Baba. But I'm still living this viat world. And when I pay attention to keep and I livestream Baba into the sacred space of my mind. I become avyat. My body is in the corporeal world. But my mind is in the subtle world. I live in the corporeal world. But I'm an angel. The angel serves through my face, through my drishti and through my vibrations. I don't have to speak. My presence gives an experience to others. Baba is now saying, child, child, come and live with me in the subtle region. All that means is to put myself under the influence of one. To take each step in life under the influence of one. My mind is under the influence of one. And when I do, I live as an angel. The world is invoking the angels to fly. The world is invoking we angels. And spread Baba's light everywhere. Om Shanti.
Om Shanti. Thank you, Divine Brother.
Thank you, Prabhupada. Thank you so much for having me. It's lovely to be with you.
Yeah, so first of all, I'd like to thank Baba for giving this such a wonderful gem. Indeed, it was a very enriching morning for all of us. We got a lot of insights, brother, from you. Something which we need to really think, churn deep within. So on behalf of Sister Sunanda from Jagdambhav Bhavan, who is inspiration for this project. And also on behalf of all the group members, I'm seeing so many thank you messages on chat window. So if I get a chance to unmute everybody, probably it will take an hour again to thank you. So on behalf of everyone, we have lots of souls joining from YouTube as well. And many more will listen throughout the day who couldn't join today morning. So on behalf of everybody, brother, really thanks. And we look forward to see you again, joining us in some months because it was really deep and I think whatever teachings Baba gives us in Avik Murli, I think you shared the essence of it. The practical way to apply in our daily life. So that was really very useful. Thanks again for all your time and despite of being so busy, I see that there is no busyness on your messages, on your face. You're very easygoing and that is something which I'm always learning from you.
Thank you, Prabhupada. Thank you, Sichandra Ben. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Manoj Bhai. And really, I promise if I come again, the internet will be in better shape.
Sure. Sure.
Thank you. Thank you, Prabhupada.
So I just have some small announcement for the others who are in the group. So let me know if I can see my screen. A couple of souls asked me about this initiative. So just because I see some new faces, some new people joining today. So just for the benefit of all, we are meeting every day twice in the morning and in the evening. So we have this in two language, in the Murli Club, the ID which you see, which you have joined today, every day we meet on the same ID at 5:00 AM and also at 9:00 PM in the evening. Whatever time suits you, somebody prefer morning and somebody prefer evening, same Murli is being read twice in two different groups. And we also have a WhatsApp group, omshanti dot tk slash Murli Club. Probably now we have reached to seventy-five WhatsApp groups because there is a huge response since over four years. We have WhatsApp support numbers, you all can take a screenshot of this speech so that you all can contact to get more details about this project. Likewise, we have the English group, we meet on a different Zoom meeting ID which you can see on the screen. And we have separate WhatsApp groups for the English members. So that you all get to read Murlys in English, churnings in English and all related communications related to that Avik Murli. We have all the materials saved on OneDrive that is tiny dot cc slash Avik Murli. So all the PDFs, all the audio Murlys, HTMLs, all the churnings, whatever good churnings we had throughout this four years. Everything of that data is saved on this drive. I believe it's more than five GB. And since last year, because we had a huge response of the recordings, we are uploading each day session on this YouTube channel called as Avik Murli Club. We have one channel for both Hindi and English. In case if you're not able to attend the Zoom calls, you all can attend recordings on these channels whenever possible throughout the day. And a big news that we are soon starting the Avik Murli Club Season Two. Because most of us might have joined in between or might have not really got a chance to read all the Murlys in sequence. So we'll be starting again from first September this year, that is next month. And we'll restart from nineteen sixty-nine, one by one each Murli. We'll be reading the Murlys daily, churning on that, finding out homework for ourselves, what Baba has to say. So we'll be continuing with the same Zoom meeting IDs and joining details. Nothing changes, just that we'll start all over again with some deeper reflections and journey. So thanks, Charlie Bhai. Thanks, everyone for joining today morning. Have a great Sunday and a day ahead. Om Shanti.
Thank you, Prabhupada. Om Shanti.